School committee members, ten seconds. Good evening. Good evening and welcome to our last school committee meeting. It is so great to see everyone. I'm just so happy that this room is full, so I know it's going to be a great meeting. But before we get started, I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And we will start with our pledge of allegiance, so please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance. Family, school committee members, and central office team, I'd like to start our meeting by giving a moment of silence to the victims of the Texas massacre. And so if you can please bow your head for just a few seconds, and we will keep those families in our prayers. Thank you. Alrighty, team, we will begin with a motion to accept the school committee minutes from our last meeting on May 5th. Thank you. Alrighty, team, now for the moment that we've all been waiting for, I will now turn it over to Dr. Beata to present our Student of the Year presentations.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see so many families and students here and staff here tonight. So what we'll do is we'll start with our Student of the Year presentation. So if each principal, we'll start with our elementary schools, if each principal could come up and share a little bit, or teacher come up and share a little bit about Student of the Year, and then we'll have time for some photos. We'll take a five-minute break for everyone to get photos. So we'll go ahead and start.
So, hi, my name is Blanca Restrepo, Principal of the Berkowitz. I am very happy and honored to be here presenting our Student of the Year, and the recipient is Genesis Mejia. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Sugg to say a few words about Genesis.
And if the students can come up and stand over here while you're reading about them, that would be great.
Estoy muy contenta y orgullosa de estar aquí presentando al estudiante del año para la escuela Berkowitz, Genesis Mejia. Le voy a pedir a Ms. Sugg que diga unas palabras sobre Genesis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ms. Sugg, I'm a fourth grade teacher at the Berkowitz School. Genesis Mejia has been a steady embodiment of our Berkowitz core values from the first day of school. She shows respect to her classmates and teachers, and has tremendous respect for herself. Genesis notices small details about what makes her peers unique and what she values in others. She's proud of her Guatemalan heritage, and she enjoys sharing each time she learns more about her parents' culture. Genesis carries herself with poise and confidence, and by doing so, she invites classmates to do the same. Genesis takes her responsibilities as a fourth grade student very seriously, and the effort that she dedicates to doing quality work, and the seriousness with which she takes her example as an older sister and older student. We can always count on her organization. Her sharp memory helps us all, including her teacher, catch what we may forget. In class, Genesis's empathy speaks through the way she comforts her classmates, listens with gentleness, and encourages others. She's known for writing poetry as gifts of affirmation to teachers and friends alike. When someone is down, we know Genesis will take on those feelings and work on a way to make every person feel better. Our last core value, determination, shines through Genesis's attitude towards school, her family, and friends. She's committed to her own learning and that of others. When she completes homework, she'll often take an extra copy home to work on with her younger siblings. She's focused on achieving her goals and working with others to accomplish theirs. Genesis recently shared with us that her parents gave her this name for a reason. Genesis, meaning the beginning, symbolizes her role as the first child. In raising Genesis so beautifully, her parents have given us all a tremendous gift, and we have great confidence that this next beginning for Genesis as a middle schooler will come with great joy and success. Congratulations.
La Escuela Hooks.
My name is Gretchen Saunders, and I am the Assistant Principal at the Hooks School. I'm here with two Hooks teachers, Leah Smith and Kristen DePaolo. When it came time to choose our Hooks School Student of the Year, our staff vote ended up in a tie between Yurman Villanueva and Ruth Bria Joseph. Knowing these students, this was not a surprise, as they are both equally deserving of this honor. Yurman and Ruth Bria embody the characteristics of a model Hooks student. They are respectful, responsible, and cooperative. They both strive to do their best in school every day. They are thoughtful friends and classmates. They are known amongst staff and students as people that you can count on and will offer help no matter the situation. Ms. Smith and Ms. DePaolo have had the pleasure of being their teachers at the Hooks School this year. Ms. Smith will be talking about Ruth Bria in just a moment, followed by Ms. DePaolo talking about Yurman.
Ruth Bria is a caring student to both teachers and classmates. She's one of the first people to jump into conversations, to help resolve conflicts, to clean up around the classroom, and is always there to offer support to classmates. She also shows her funny side when chatting with others, and can often be found laughing with her friends in class. Ruth Bria is a bright ray of sunshine in our classroom community, and she shares her joy with others around her, as well as with others around our school. Ruth Bria's determination as a student also makes her deserving of this honor, and she is determined to try her best in school every day. She advocates for herself and for her friends when someone is in need of help with their work, or in need of help when they are feeling upset. She has worked incredibly hard to make progress on all of her academic goals this year and in all of her years at the Hooks School. Ruth Bria is also a fantastic writer and artist, and can often be found creating her own stories, inspired by her friends and by her family. I have no doubts that Ruth Bria's love of learning will take her to new heights as a student and as a member of the Chelsea community. Yurman is friendly, thoughtful, and understanding of his classmates. You will often find Yurman carrying other people's materials when they need help, cleaning up his classroom without even being asked, or offering a hug to a peer who is feeling upset. He does all this because he genuinely cares about his friends and his teachers, and wants to see them do well. He uses his positivity to make his peers around him into better people. He is always the first to play with someone or cheer them up, even if he doesn't know them. He has an ability to see the good in every person he encounters, and wants to help everyone succeed. In addition to being extremely kind and helpful, Yurman is a dedicated and enthusiastic student who loves learning. Even if an academic topic does not come easy to him, he will consistently try his best and work hard until he understands the material. He does this with a positive attitude and a smile on his face. His positive attitude and work ethic makes the classroom a happier place, and his cheerful spirit is contagious. He can uplift a room just by being himself. Yurman and Ruth Bria have so many wonderful qualities that will ensure they have a successful life, and will continue to thrive as they move on through the grades in the Chelsea Public Schools. Our whole community at the Hooks School will feel a loss as they leave for middle school next year, but we know that they are both off to do amazing things. Principal Clark, Assistant Principal Saunders, Ms. Smith, and myself are extremely proud to call Yurman and Ruth Bria the Hooks School Co-Students of the Year.
(Applause).
Good evening, my name's Lisa Line Weaver, I'm the Principal of the Kelly Elementary School. Hola, soy Lisa Line Weaver, la directora de la Escuela Kelly. Y estoy muy emocionada esta noche para presentar dos maestras de nuestra Student of the Year. I'm very excited this evening to present the two teachers of our Student of the Year. She's a student in our dual-language program, Caminos. So she has an English teacher and a Spanish teacher, and they're both here tonight. Nuestra estudiante del año es una niña en el programa Caminos, una programa dual-lingüe, y su maestra del inglés y también de español ambos son aquí. So I'm gonna introduce Julie Gil-Martin and Gwen Coyle, who are gonna speak about our Student of the Year, Brianna Marin-Mancio. Brianna, come on up.
Hi, I'm Julie Gil-Martin, and I am Brianna's English teacher. And I'm gonna read the speech in English first, and then Gwen will translate in Spanish. So as Brianna's teachers, we are so thrilled to be presenting her with the Student of the Year award. She's more than deserving. Brianna is a Camino scholar, as Ms. Line Weaver mentioned, so she spends half of her day learning in Spanish and half of her day learning in English. Brianna is a student who demonstrates all of the qualities of a Kelly School scholar, specifically that of a Camino scholar. She brings joy, responsibility, and knowledge to both of our classrooms. She not only speaks English and Spanish fluently, she's both a very strong reader and writer in both languages. She thinks creatively and is able to apply what she learns in both classrooms and bridge them together. Whether it's solving a math equation or offering advice to a classmate, Brianna is always eager to help. She's the first to share a compliment when seeing someone is down or needs a boost of confidence. We call Brianna "the class mom" because she takes care of everyone and reminds her classmates, and also teachers sometimes, of what needs to get done, but it's always in a kind and thoughtful way. Her intuitive and curious nature really allows her to bring a new perspective to all of our learning. We are so proud, so, so proud, to have Brianna represent the Kelly School as our Student of the Year, knowing that her future is going to be very, very bright.
Como maestras de Brianna, estamos encantadas de presentarle el premio del estudiante del año. Brianna está en el programa Caminos, por lo que es pasar la mitad del día aprendiendo en español y la otra mitad en inglés. Brianna es una estudiante que demuestra todas las cualidades de un modelo de la Escuela Kelly y el programa Caminos. Ella trae alegría, responsabilidad, y conocimiento a nuestros dos hablas. Brianna no solo habla inglés y español con fluidez, sino que también es una gran lectora y escritora en ambos idiomas. Piensa de forma creativa y es capaz de aplicar lo que aprende y establecer un puente entre idiomas. Ya sea resolviendo una ecuación matemática o ofreciendo consejos a un compañero de clase, Brianna siempre está dispuesta a ayudar. Ella es la primera en compartir un cumplido cuando ve que alguien está triste o necesita un impulso de confianza. Llamamos a Brianna "la mamá de la clase" porque cuida de todos y les recuerda a sus compañeros y a veces sus maestros lo que se debe hacer, siempre de una manera amable. Su naturaleza intuitiva y curiosa le permite aportar una nueva perspectiva a todo nuestro aprendizaje. Estamos muy orgullosas de que Brianna represente a la Escuela Kelly como estudiante del año, sabiendo que su futuro es brillante.
Hi, everybody, my name's Nate Myers, I'm the Principal at the Sokolowski School, and this is Mr. Kelly, our award winner's teacher. So I'm excited to announce the energetic, passionate, trustworthy, and dynamic Nyla Rodriguez is the Sokolowski School's Student of the Year. Okay, and I will have Mr. Paul Kelly, her teacher, who knows her very well, give his remarks.
Good evening. It's with real pleasure that I'm here to present Nyla to you. It's with real pleasure that I'm here to present Nyla to you.
Es con mucho orgullo que estoy en esta noche aquí presentándole a Nyla a ustedes.
In every family, every person has their own tradition that they come from, and in my own tradition, when something's really important, you can often begin and end in a little bit of silence, and I'll just offer that for Nyla and for all those who have been awarded this honor tonight.
Para mí y en mi casa y mi trayectoria es un honor de tener un silencio de momento en honor a todos los que están hoy siendo presentados con un honor.
Nyla is a cheerful person.
Nyla es una niña muy contenta.
She's a good friend, and she's helpful.
Y es una buena amiga y ayuda mucho.
She's someone who laughs readily with people and not at them.
Ella siempre está dando una sonrisa o riéndose, no solamente con alguien, pero por cualquier cosa.
She always works hard to do her best and cares about the quality of her work and about learning.
Ella siempre trabaja muy duro y también le importa la calidad de trabajo que ella hace.
One of the things that most has impressed me about Nyla as a learner is that she asks questions, and she asks questions when she doesn't yet understand to make sure that she can learn and understand.
Una de las cualidades que ella tiene es que como un aprendiz ella pregunta muchas preguntas. Aún cuando ella no sabe la respuesta, ella hace preguntas porque haciendo esto ella aprende más.
Nyla regularly contributes her ideas, her observations, her questions, to help all of us learn in our classroom.
Ella siempre está prestando atención y haciendo gestos y ayudando para que todos podamos aprender al mismo tiempo.
She's always happy to be a partner with other students, to help look at their work and help them to improve their work, and to receive feedback from them to improve her own work.
Y ella trabaja en conjunto con sus amigos de clase, no solamente para ayudarlos a ellos, pero para ayudarla ella también.
Nyla has brightened my classroom, our classroom, all year. It was delightful for me to find that as the faculty voting came through for Nyla, that so many other teachers, specialists, her past teachers, and others who'd worked with her recognized that same spirit in her.
Para mí es un placer cuando supe que el personal de la escuela había escogido. Ella es una niña que ha sido un rayo de luz que brilla sobre todo el salón de clase.
This spring, Nyla has been participating in an after-school program called Girls on the Run, and I talked with Ms. Haji Dimos, who was a third-grade teacher, and said that Nyla's helpful and encouraging spirit just really shone through in that after-school activity as it has in the classroom.
Nyla ha participado después de escuela en un programa llamado Girls for the Run, en el cual la maestra ha compartido que ha sido un placer porque es una niña que ayuda tanto en este programa.
I've seen in Nyla a commitment that I believe will still carry with her throughout her life, to work through whatever challenges there are, to do her best and contribute to the group she's part of, the community she's part of, and her own growth.
Yo veo una cualidad en ella muy linda, que yo sé que no importa dónde ella vaya, qué obstáculo o qué meta o qué algo que se interponga en ella a crecer, ella va a poder sobrepasarlo.
And so, it's with great joy that I present Nyla Rodriguez, our Sokolowski Student of the Year.
Para mí es un placer presentarle a Nyla Rodriguez nuestra estudiante del año de la Escuela Sokolowski.
Hi, my name's Adam Delaney. I'm the assistant superintendent, and I'm speaking for the Brown Middle School.
Yo soy Adam Delaney. Yo soy el sub, atendente a la superintendente, y voy a estar hablando en parte de la...
Brown School?
De la Brown School.
And I'm going to turn it over to our CTU Union President and rock star eighth-grade teacher, Ms. Catherine Anderson, but before I do, I want to share one quick thing.
Voy a presentarle aquí la dama que está aquí al lado, que trabaja para la Unión, pero también que es una maestra de octavo grado excelente.
So I had the pleasure of having two of my best moments of the entire school year this week, actually last week. The first moment was calling our Student of the Year down to give her the news that she was our Student of the Year.
En esta semana tuve dos privilegios bien grandes, que fue anunciar cuál era la persona que se iba a ganar el oro en esta noche.
And just watching her facial expression and the pride that came out of her was a moment that I will not forget.
Y ver su carita y sus expresiones de tanta alegría es algo que nunca voy a olvidar.
But an even better moment, and a more powerful moment, was when we got Mom on the phone and we had her on speakerphone.
Pero algo mucho más especial fue cuando llamamos a mamá para darle la noticia por el teléfono.
I immediately felt the pride oozing out of the telephone, and at that moment, Mom had known that all the work she had put in raising her child the right way had paid off.
Fue un momento tan lindo. Era tanto el orgullo que la mamá resplandía por el teléfono, que ya sabía que el trabajo duro y alto que ya había puesto en el estudiante iba a ser un fruto lindo.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Anderson, and if our Student of the Year can come up.
Y ahora le doy el micrófono a la maestra para presentar el estudiante del año.
Kimberly, ¿puedes pasar al frente?
So I am thrilled to be presenting the 2021-2022 Brown Middle School Student of the Year Award to Kimberly Estrada Mazariegos. Kimberly attended the ELC, the Kelly, the Brown, and she's really looking forward to attending Chelsea High School in the fall.
Es un honor presentarles hoy a Kimberly, presentarle este honor del año 21-22 de la Brown School como estudiante del año. Kimberly ha ido a todas las escuelas públicas, no todas todavía, pero fue al ELC, a la Kelly, a la Brown. Estamos esperando que ella pueda ir a la Escuela Chelsea High School.
Kimberly has embraced both students and adults since her very first days at the Brown Middle School, and her teachers have lots of good things to say about her.
Kimberly ha sido una inspiración, no solamente para los estudiantes, pero para los adultos desde el primer día en la Brown Middle School. Sus escuelas, sus maestras tienen el honor de tenerla ella.
Ms. Gannon says, "What I respect about Kimberly is her willingness to work hard, share her ideas, and support her peers. She's an exceptional young woman, and I look forward to seeing where her path takes her."
Y una de las maestras dice, quiere mencionar, que ella es una niña muy respetuosa, que siempre está dispuesta a trabajar duro y compartir sus ideas con sus compañeros de clase. Ella es una joven excepcional, y puedo esperar, no puedo esperar, mirar a dónde su futuro la lleva.
Ms. Phoenix says that in science, Kimberly is one of the first people to raise her hands and try to answer particularly difficult questions, because she knows that by facing challenges, they're fun, and that's also how we grow.
La maestra de ciencia quiere notar que la primera persona para levantar la mano es Kimberly, aunque sea una pregunta difícil, y que ella es una modelo, aunque es un reto, pero también puede ser divertido. Kimberly ha crecido inmensamente y da el mayor esfuerzo todos los días.
Ms. Bowie says that she's particularly impressed with how willing Kimberly is to volunteer answers in class, how reliably hard she works, and how her proficiency in class keeps on rising along with her efforts.
La maestra, una de las maestras en particular, está bien impresionada por la manera que ella se lleva, dando voluntariamente preguntas al salón de clase, cómo ella es trabajadora y es bien especial y mantiene levantando la mano y dando todo su esfuerzo y ayudando a los estudiantes de matemáticas.
When Kimberly's asked what she's most proud of, she's quick to respond with her classroom accomplishments, as well as her ability to make the right choices even when it's difficult. She's made the honor roll every single year she's attended the Brown.
Y cuando se le pregunta a Kimberly por qué ella está tan contenta con ella misma, y ella dice que es porque ella ha cumplido las habilidades de hacer decisiones correctas, aunque sean difíciles. Ella ha estado en el honor roll, que es la lista de honores, todos los años desde que ella está en el Brown School.
But when you ask her what helped her to get to that point, she's really quick to describe the support she received from her family and from her friends.
Y cuando le preguntan a ella por qué ha llegado ahí o cómo ha llegado ahí, ella siempre dice que no es sola, que es la ayuda de sus familiares y sus amistades.
Her parents have always valued education and have ensured and instilled those same values in Kimberly and her two siblings.
Los padres de Kimberly han puesto valores o han inculcado valores académicos en ella igual de manera a sus hermanos o hermanas.
She also credits her friends. Kimberly has surrounded herself with friends that support her, and that her friends encourage her to do her best and to never give up.
Y también le da créditos a sus amistades. Ella está rodeada de muchas amistades que la ayudan. Ella dice que sus amistades la ayudan a ella a seguir hacia adelante y que nunca tire la toalla.
Kimberly already has some goals for herself for high school and beyond. In high school, she'd like to make the soccer team and maybe the basketball team, and she wants to earn a spot on the National Honor Society. I'm sure she will.
So yeah, Kimberly está pensando ya que cuando ella llegue a la escuela superior, ella quiere participar en deportes como es el soccer o jugar el baloncesto. Ella también quiere continuar estar en la lista de los estudiantes que tienen honores.
She wants to earn the highest grades possible and to continue to learn from her mistakes, as she knows that these can provide the most valuable learning lessons.
Ella, ella quiere tener las notas o los grados más altos posible que ella pueda tener, porque ella dice que esto va a proveer las lecciones más valibles para ella.
College is a non-negotiable for her, but most importantly, she wants to make sure that she's a good citizen and prepares herself for independence.
So ir a colegio no es algo negociable para ella. Ella quiere estar segura que ella sea una patriarca o una persona que en su comunidad ayuda y prepararse para ser independiente.
Kimberly would like to be a nurse or a detective, continuing to use her skills to help those around her.
Ella quiere ser una enfermera o una detective y continuar usar sus destrezas para ayudar a aquellos que la rodean.
And lastly, Kimberly wanted to make sure that we shared her gratitude for everything that her teachers have done for her. She emphasizes that she's grateful to all of her eighth-grade teachers for her success and for the confidence she's developed, but she particularly wanted to thank her math teacher, Ms. Bowie.
Kimberly quería que nosotros mencionemos la gratitud que ella tiene por todas sus maestras que la han ayudado, y quería enfatizar un agradecimiento a todas sus maestras de octavo grado por hacerla ella, tener la confianza, y hacer que ella pueda estar donde está. Especialmente quiero darle las gracias a mi maestra de matemática, Ms. Bowie.
So another sign of Kimberly's growth mindset, she admits that math hasn't always been her favorite subject, but Ms. Bowie has made it fun and helped her to understand math in a new way.
Y aunque matemática no es una de las materias que a ella más le gusta, que son fáciles, su maestra ha convertido el aprender matemática muy como un juego para que ella pueda entender.
Kimberly is a shining example of how hard work and support pay off. She's applied growth and kindness to all of her endeavors. CHS is so lucky to have her, and Chelsea is so fortunate to have her in our community.
Y ella ha brillado como un ejemplo de una persona, una niña, una joven que ha trabajado duro, y que el trabajo que ella ha hecho le ha pagado bien. Ella no sabe cuán suerte tiene la Chelsea High School por tener esta niña en su escuela.
That we congratulate Kimberly, her family, and friends for being Student of the Year.
Queremos felicitar a Kimberly, a sus amigos y familiares, por ser la estudiante de honor del año.
Good evening. My name is Mike Talbot, and I am the principal of the Clark Avenue Middle School.
Buenas noches. Yo soy el principal de la Clark School.
We are very proud of our Student of the Year nominee, Allison Romero, and we are very excited to honor her this evening.
Para mí es un honor presentar la nominada esta noche en el honor de estudiante del año.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bennington, her literacy teacher and eighth-grade teacher, to speak on her behalf.
Y voy a presentar su maestro de octavo, que va a hablar sobre ella.
The work we do is so much more than grades, but I would like to let the record show that I that I have seen the most impressive report card from Allison. It was straight A pluses except for one class. I gave you an A, and I'm sorry. It was probably my fault.
Es bien impresionante cuando yo tengo que calificar estos grados, pero le tuve que dar una A. Perdona.
We want our students to dream big, especially when they are young.
Queremos que nuestros estudiantes sueñen grande, especialmente cuando son jóvenes.
Once in a while, we are impressed by those who seem to see their path toward those dreams before even leaving middle school.
Es impresionante ver que algunos de ellos cuando están en ese camino de sus sueños están solamente en la escuela intermedia.
Allison Romero Romero is one of those students. When Allison entered eighth grade, she said she wanted to be a lawyer. She reads and writes prolifically. She takes care of her own work. She helps others, and she asks for more.
Allison Romero es uno de esos estudiantes o una de esas estudiantes. Ella entró en el octavo grado. Ella quería ser una abogada. Ella escribe y lee con perfección. Ella trabaja duro y cuida de su trabajo y ayuda a otros. Y si ella me pregunta a mí...
Allison exemplifies what we hope for in our students. A young person who sees the world as a place that will soon be theirs and steps up to that challenge.
Allison es el ejemplo de ese estudiante como un estudiante joven que ve el mundo como un lugar que pronto ella va a comenzar a caminar a unos retos.
A person open to new ideas and skills who accepts the difficulties with a personal grace.
Ella es una persona que está bien tan nuevas ideas y destrezas y acepta las dificultades con una gracia.
Because of the nature of the way she hears, it is more difficult for Allison to locate and focus on one voice in a noisy classroom. Now, you may not know this, or you may have forgotten, but middle school is a very noisy place.
Quiero dejarle que la naturaleza, como ella oye, a veces es difícil y se nos olvida que la escuela intermedia es bien difícil de oír. Hay mucho ruido.
Allison's ability to cut through the noise shows a remarkable level of maturity and a belief in herself.
La habilidad que ella tiene para bloquear esos ruidos en un nivel de madurez y cree en ella.
Allison, we are proud of you for many reasons, and we want to push you to do your best. We send you forward with confidence, pride, and this challenge. Embrace the messiness of the world. You have a gift for working through the noise, but don't forget to take time to slow down and appreciate the weird and wonderful and noisy, the things that are sometimes uncomfortable and strange, but still worth the adventure. You have a lot to offer the world, and it has a lot to offer you.
Yes, vamos a respirar. Estoy muy orgulloso por muchas razones. Yo quiero empujarte a que tú seas lo mejor que tú puedas hacer. Sabemos que vas a estar en dificultades, pero te queremos mandar con una confidente, que estés contenta y que esos retos que tú vas a encontrarte en el camino tú puedas hacerlo sin dificultad. Que puedas bloquear todos esos ruidos que se te aparezcan en el camino. No te olvides que tienes que cogerlo suave para que puedas tener alegría en todos los ruidos y que los ruidos también pueden ser buenos. Me siento confortable porque es una aventura que vas a poder hacer, porque tienes mucho que ofrecerle a este mundo.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is with great honor and pride that we present to you this year's Student of the Year from the Clark Avenue Middle School, Allison Romero Romero.
Es con un gran orgullo y honor que quiero presentarle al estudiante del año de la Clark Avenue Middle School, Allison Romero Romero.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Martinello. I'm the principal of the Wright Middle School, and this is my assistant principal, Felipe Gomez.
Buenas noches a todos. Yo soy la directora. Conmigo está el subdirector de la Escuela Wright Middle School.
The Wright Middle School is pleased to introduce Katherine Gonzalez-Payams as our Student of the Year.
Estamos presentando a Katherine Gonzalez. Es un placer. Ella es el estudiante del año de nuestra escuela.
Middle School is not only about how a student performs academically, but also about the activities students are involved in and the relationships they build each year.
La escuela intermedia no es solamente lo que tú puedes hacer académicamente, pero también tiene que ver con las actividades y cómo tú te envuelve y las relaciones que tú estás cosechando cada año.
Katherine is a role model to her peers in all of these areas. Not only does she do extremely well in each of our classes, but she does so while being involved in extracurricular activities, including the student council.
Katherine es un modelo a seguir para sus compañeros de clase. En todos los tres años en esta área, ella es extremadamente... Se comporta extremadamente bien en su salón de clase y también se envuelve en actividades extracur... Curriculum, actividades incluidos como el cónsul de estudiante. Ella es bien comportada y ella también le da aliento a otros cuando los días están bajos. Ella es parte del grupo de amistad.
She is very kind to all the students she encounters throughout the day, regardless whether or not they are part of her friend group. In class, she is always focused and attentive while being conscientious towards her work.
Y ella siempre está ayudando a sus amigos y también enfocada bien tentamente, consciente cuando está haciendo su trabajo.
Going above and beyond is the norm for her. She is 100% or 110% committed each and every day.
Ella hace mucho más de lo que ella hace. Ella tiene un 100% de lo que ella da diariamente. Oh, perdón. Un 110, no un 100.
Katherine was even part of our student committee when we had to hire this guy, our new assistant principal last year.
Katherine era parte del comité cuando nosotros teníamos que buscar a alguien, el trabajo que tiene este al lado mío como asintente a principal.
So I didn't write this down, but she didn't believe it at the time, but she was part of the reason we went with Mr. Gomez.
Ella, esto no lo escribí yo aquí en el papel para decirlo, pero yo quiero decirle que ella fue una parte importante porque el cual nosotros le dimos al trabajo a él.
She asked great questions and was eager to not only grill the candidates, but also offer them advice about middle school.
Ella hizo muchas preguntas y tenía, era bien grande y como que nos dio duro para hacerle preguntas al candidato y también para ofrecer consejos.
And since you helped me hire him, it's not only fair that he helped me finish this speech.
Y porque me ayudaste en el yo escoger esta persona para el trabajo, también él va a ser parte de lo que va a decir hoy para ti.
Katherine radiates kindness, and she's very sincere. She is an absolute joy to have a discussion with.
Ella es muy sincera y es una persona bien fácil de tener conversación.
Her work ethic and kind heart will take her far. It is with pleasure that the WSTA recognizes Katherine as our Student of the Year and knows she will be an amazing addition to Chelsea High School, and I wish you all the luck.
Su trabajo ético y su corazón tan grande la llevarán a lugares bien largos. Es un placer para mí reconocer a Katherine como WS... WSTA, Katherine estudiante del año. Sabemos que vas a hacer cosas extraordinarias, extraordinarias el año que viene en Chelsea High School.
Thank you. My name is Michael Lovato. I'm the assistant superintendent and acting principal for Chelsea High School.
Mi nombre es Michael Lovato y yo soy subdirector, asistente a la superintendente y también soy el principal de la high school.
Thank you for that, CC. He'll take it. It is with great pleasure that I have the ability and honor to announce two candidates that we chose, nominees rather, that we chose for Student of the Year. Adisa Ricardo, if you can both come up, please.
Es un honor de presentarle a dos candidatos.
Adisa.
Adisa y Ricardo.
You know, in the last six months since I've been at the high school, I got to admit, there are so many students that could have been up here today. These two were chosen more for their quiet leadership, their steady leadership, and just their ethical standards of who they are.
Y yo podría preferir otros estudiantes que estuvieran esta noche con nosotros en su lugar, pero por su ética y por ser ustedes unos estudiantes especiales es que están hoy aquí.
For Ricardo, each administrator and each one of the leads noted him for his academics, his extracurricular activities. You're always present without question. Go ahead and start there.
Y Ricardo, te escogimos a ti porque, por tu trabajo duro, por tu trabajo haciendo cosas en el currículo extra después de escuela.
One of his best attributes is he's always willing to help. He's always willing to support faculty, support students, and never once does he look for any type of recognition. Never once does he look for any attention with his acts towards others.
Y uno de sus atributos es cómo él ayuda no solamente a los estudiantes, pero al personal de la escuela sin buscar nada a cambio.
And without question, he will go on to do great things. We look forward to seeing what you do in the future, and it is our honor for Chelsea High School to have had you part of us and for us to be able to recognize you as one of the Students of the Year.
Y para no añadir más, es un privilegio mencionarte a ti como estudiante del año de Chelsea High School.
With Adisa, if you don't mind, I'm going to start with a story on how I met Adisa, as that's one of the reasons why I believe her leadership and for who she is without question should be recognized.
Y voy a empezar con una historia si no te molesta. ¿Por qué te escogí a ti hoy y por tu liderazgo?
My first week as interim principal, I had Adisa approach Bianca and schedule the meeting to have a discussion with me unbeknown. I had no idea what the discussion was about, but you know, I met with Adisa.
So Adisa, las primeras semanas que yo empecé ese trabajo en la escuela superior, ella hizo una cita para hablar conmigo. Yo no sé de lo que ella quería hablarme.
Adisa challenged me. She challenged me for not doing enough in regards to equity, and she challenged me for not being fast enough. Here, I thought it was a week on time and that I was okay, but she let me know it was still unacceptable.
Y en esa cita que tuve con ella, ella me dio un reto bien grande porque me estaba diciendo que yo no estaba haciendo mi trabajo con igualdad.
Got to admit, I was a little taken back. I had never been put in my place so quickly by a student.
Le quiero admitir que me puse, fue un reto porque nunca venía, vino, ha venido un estudiante a decirme así, a ponerme en mi sitio.
For those of you who know me, you know that's not an easy task.
Para los que me conocen, sabe que esto no es un trabajo fácil.
With that being said, her challenges and her leadership with equity throughout the school were second to none, and Adisa, I will say that you have continued that work. It has shown without the school, and obviously, there's much work to be held, but we started it on your leadership.
Y quiero dejarle saber a ella que por su postura y liderazgo sobre la igualdad es porque hoy comenzamos este trabajo arduo que tenemos.
And I could honestly share that, Adisa, I've learned more from you and your leadership than I was able to provide you, so thank you.
Y yo quiero dejarle saber a ella que yo he aprendido más sobre tu liderazgo de lo que yo sabía.
And just a reminder to everybody, these are the types of students that we have at Chelsea High School, so it is my honor to recognize you, and for that, thank you for letting me work with you guys and be your leader throughout the school year.
Y con esto quiero dejarle saber que es un honor de tenerte como estudiante del año de la Chelsea High School. Gracias.
So, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the school committee, Dr. Abada, the cabinet for being here tonight, and of course, all of you folks, these wonderful students and staff members and families, to honor the great work that we're doing here in Chelsea Public Schools. So with that, I'd like to introduce the Chelsea Opportunity Academy Student of the Year, Isaac Middleton.
Quiero darle las gracias al comité, a la doctora superintendente por estar aquí, a todos ustedes, los padres, por estar aquí. Es un placer de presentarle al estudiante del año de la academia... de la Academia de Oportunidades de Chelsea.
There's just one small problem tonight, and that Isaac actually isn't a student at Chelsea Opportunity Academy.
Y hay un problema pequeño, que Isaac no es un estudiante de la academia.
Although he was with us and did some amazing work, he came with a lot of courses already under his belt, but he came to Chelsea Opportunity Academy and demonstrated excellence. But he came to Chelsea Opportunity Academy and demonstrated excellence in every single course he took.
Y aunque él no es un estudiante, él era un estudiante y tenía muchas habilidades y tenía mucho trabajo que él llevaba con él, por eso fue nominado hoy.
But if you came to Chelsea Opportunity Academy today, you would find Isaac there.
Pero si tú vienes y vesita la academia hoy, puedes tener por seguro que tú vas a encontrar a Isaac ahí.
So Isaac is not only our Student of the Year, he is a Chelsea Opportunity Academy alumni who graduated in December. He is also a Chelsea Public Schools employee and is one of our academic mentors.
So no solamente él es el Estudiante del Año, pero él también es un alumni de la escuela y también trabaja para el sistema público de Chelsea.
And Isaac doesn't simply sit with students and help them with courses he's already taken. Isaac goes deep and gives them meaningful feedback in the work they're doing and helps them with their performance assessments.
Y solamente él no solo se sienta con los estudiantes, pero él les da genuinamente el tiempo que estos estudiantes se merecen para ayudarlos académicamente o en cualquier situación.
Simply stated, Isaac has been exemplary in all aspects of his interactions with our staff, students, and the school community.
Para dejar destacar, él es un ejemplo no solamente para los estudiantes sino para el personal y para nuestra comunidad.
Mom, family, you should be very proud of Isaac. He is gonna have a great future.
Y quiero felicitar a la mamá, a sus familiares, y pueden tener por seguro que Isaac va a tener un futuro muy brillante.
Isaac isn't gonna end his support of others with Chelsea Opportunity Academy. He has plans to become a fireman in Boston.
Su trabajo no va a terminar con los estudiantes de Chelsea porque él también va a ser o va a querer ser un bombero en la ciudad de Boston.
Lucky for us and our students, Isaac isn't 19 yet, so he has to stay with us until he takes the fireman's exam.
Pero para Isaac, afortunadamente él solo tiene 19 años. Él tiene que esperar hasta que él coja el examen para ser bombero.
And now I'd like to read some words from Isaac's crew leader, Mr. Aaronson.
Y quiero leer unas notas sobre un líder, Arnoldson, Isaac.
So, Mr. Aaronson, Isaac's crew leader and Chelsea Opportunity Academy Assistant Principal, was unable to attend tonight's event.
So el asistente principal no pudo asistir esta noche aquí.
He wrote the following words. Isaac is the embodiment of Chelsea Opportunity Academy spirit.
Y escribió estas notas. Isaac es el espíritu de la academia.
He is a true warrior, fighting through challenges he faced that forced him to leave school, learning about himself and his many strengths, and then blossoming into the person he is today.
Peleando contra los retos que él tenía que hacer al dejar la escuela, aprendiendo por él mismo lo fuerte que él podía ser para que él pueda crecer y brillar como la persona que es hoy.
He is inquisitive as he is driven.
Él es inclusivamente igual como él se guía hacia adelante.
He pursues any interest he has, be it teaching, firefighting, changing oil, or shaping global political structures.
Él trabaja para lo y se interesa en las cosas, no solamente en el aprendizaje o cómo ser bombero o cómo cambiarle el aceite a un carro, pero también para formar la estructura global y política.
I am proud to call him an alumni and now as an academic support member and COA staff member.
Ahora tengo el orgullo de presentarlo o llamarlo como un alumni o como una persona, un mentor que ayuda académicamente y como un trabajador que trabaja como nosotros.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Chelsea Opportunity Academy Student of the Year, Isaac Middleton.
Es un honor de presentar al Estudiante del Año de la academia.
Hi, everybody. My name is Meg Messini and I'm the principal of Chelsea's newest school, Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy. We opened September 3rd with three students and we're now at over seventy-five. And Kristel was one of our first students.
Ella es la principal de la escuela virtual. Comenzamos con tres estudiantes, ahora tenemos setenta y cinco estudiantes.
It's my pleasure to ask Kristel to come up so we can give her some love and to acknowledge her as our Student of the Year.
Quiero presentarle y darle el olol y presentarle al Estudiante del Año.
What's her name? Kristel?
Kristel Romero.
Kristel was one of CVLA's first pioneers. She joined us in October.
Ella era una de las pioneras de la escuela en el once grado que comenzó con nosotros.
She was very shy and quiet as an eleventh grader. And one of the first ways I got to know her was through her art in these amazing texts I get from one of the teachers with Kristel singing acapella, her own original songs.
Es una niña bien callada y bien conservada a ella misma. Se me sorprendió cuando recibí unos textos que ella se grabó cantando acapella.
Sometime during the winter, Kristel decided to kick her academic brilliance into gear and achieved two years' worth of academic work this year.
Durante este invierno, ella pudo echar mucho a para adelante académicamente y brillar y hacer trabajo que costaba, que era trabajo de dos años.
She spent many late nights and early mornings on her classes and she achieved straight A's and joined seven other seniors as CVLA's inaugural class of the graduates of 2022.
Fueron muchas noches y días trabajando, pero ella pudo hacer, llegar a una meta de ella ser la número siete entre otros alumnos y graduarse en la clase del 2022.
There are so many things that I could say about Kristel. I could go on for hours and hours, but I know that Mr. Lovato will kill me, so I'm going to be more brief than that.
Yo sé que puedo decir muchas cosas sobre esta estudiante, pero lo voy a hacer más pequeño porque yo sé que Mr. Lovato me va a matar.
But something that you should know is Kristel decorated Mr. Lovato's office with two original pieces of art that she did, and they are hanging in his office.
Quiero mencionar que ella hizo dos dibujos que decoraron la oficina de él.
Kristel is not afraid to speak up and to support others. During a bullying Zoom bombing incident where elementary students were exposed to a stranger who was inappropriate, Kristel insisted on going to their advisory and speaking to our littles.
Ella no tiene miedo de hablar. Durante un evento donde alguien extranjero entró a la pantalla de Zoom a decir cosas inapropiadas, ella quería insistir en hablar. No solo pequeños, pero la necesidad de no preocuparse y mantener la calma.
She assured them that they need not worry about, all they needed to worry about was their schooling and that the adults would take care of the intruder and what happened was wrong and that she had experienced something similar and that she was there to reassure them and tell them not to worry.
Y ella quería asegurar que no se preocuparan y que siguieran, que los adultos en la página se iban a encargar de esta persona porque algo similar le había pasado en el pasado a ella y ella quería asegurar que no se preocuparan, que todo estaba bien.
Kristel makes the world a more thoughtful, interesting, deep, and compelling place.
Ella hace que este mundo sea más pensativo, interesante, y que tengan compasión del lugar. Con un regalo escribió una canción para cantar virtuar como artista.
She's a gifted songwriter, singer, and visual artist. She is an empathetic, kind person with a huge and tender heart. Truly an outstanding human who has already overcome such great challenges.
Ella tiene un corazón grande como un humano y tiene empatía para otros. Ella es un ser muy, es un ser humano que que ya ella ha vencidos los retos que le han venido en su camino.
If you would have asked Kristel earlier this year, I'm not sure if she would have shared her plans. I'm not sure she quite believes she's in this place right now where she's going to be graduating. But she has made up her mind to apply to college for this fall to pursue a major in performing arts.
Si le preguntarían a ella, yo creo que ella misma ni se cree que ya está hoy en el lugar que está. Ella ha preparado y se ha puesto en su mente que va a aplicar a la universidad en esta primavera para hacer una carrera en artes.
Lastly, in a world that can be a confusing place for young people, Kristel approaches who she is with a brilliant clarity. She is a gifted communicator and she is not afraid to be who she is.
Y para terminar, en este mundo tan confuso para los jóvenes, ella es bien brillante y bien clara. Ella tiene un regalo para comunicar. Ella no le tiene miedo a quien ella es.
She will always be our Catracha Goth Queen. CVLA Student of the Year, Kristel Romero.
Tú siempre vas a ser Catracha Goth Queen, SBLA Estudiante del Año. Señorita Romero.
Is Jimena Jimenez from Sokoloski here tonight? Sorry, that is the case. My name is Monica Lamboy. I am the Director of Administration and Finance. And each year, I work with many people to develop the budget for the district for the year that comes. Soy la directora de administración y finanza y cada año trabajo con muchas personas para escribir el presupuesto del distrito por el año que viene. I also have a very heavy responsibility to select the artwork, the student artwork that goes into the budget each year, including the text and on the cover. También yo tengo una responsabilidad muy pesada para seleccionar las obras de arte de estudiantes por el documento y la tapa. And each year, it is very hard because we have so many powerful artists in Chelsea Public Schools. Y cada año es difícil porque tenemos muchas artistas poderosas en las escuelas de Chelsea. The theme for the year that is coming is to restore and rebuild. Y la obra and the work of Jimena Jimenez of the Sokoloski School is perfect for this theme. El tema del año que viene es restaurar y reconstruir y la obra de Jimena Jimenez de la escuela Sokoloski era perfecta por este tema. Aquí está la obra. Here's the work. Los colores, los edificios y el sol dicen todo sobre este tema. The colors, the buildings, and the sun say everything about this theme. Muchísimas gracias a Jimena and we hope you continue to be an artist throughout your entire career.
Congratulations to all the students and families here tonight. We are forgetting one last student, CC. CC, honey, you have been such a joy in our meetings and while I can read the certificate, I want to look at you and read and just speak from the heart. When I look at you, I see a resilient, bright student and I'm getting a little emotional because you are Chelsea. You represent who we are as a community and you care so much about our community of Chelsea. And so, we wish you the best of luck and we know that you are going to do so many great things in this world. Don't forget about where you came from. Be proud of this city and always come back to visit us, okay? Thank you. Please join me in the front. Bueno, familias, sé que hay muchos sueños, veo a muchos bebés durmiendo. And so, families, I know it's been a long night, but I want to remind you all that this is Chelsea. This is love. What I experienced tonight and what our school committee members experience is joy, tears of joy as well. And we just want to remind you to continue striving for the best. Continue going after your dreams and know that you have a team of love and support. This is not only a night for students to celebrate, but families. Esta noche es para la familia que nunca dejaron a sus niños solo y que siempre están detrás de su espalda apoyándolo en todos sus sueños. Entonces vamos a tomar un breve receso de cinco minutitos. We'll take a small five-minute break para que saquen fotos aquí con la familia, con los estudiantes, y que sigan celebrando, y felicidades a toditos. So, thank you, we'll take a small break. Gracias. Alrighty, school committee team, we are going to resume our meeting. Let's head back to our seats. Families continue to celebrate, it is a night of celebration. But school committee members, we have a meeting to finish, so... And we're celebrating, right? So let's come back to our seats and get this meeting going. Alrighty, welcome back. We will resume where we left off and I will now turn it over to Dr. Bata to present our retirees for this year.
Thank you and good evening, retirees. Thank you so much for waiting so patiently. I am so excited to, we had to announce our retirees. We have 11 this year. Not everyone can make it, so I'm gonna start with the retirees that are here. So I'm going to call up Sheila De Jesus. And Sheila, if you can come join us over here, just like our students did. Yay! Thank you, Sheila. So, congratulations. Whereas Sheila De Jesus has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over 28 years and Sheila has been a dedicated paraprofessional since 1993 at the Shertlett South and the Hooks Elementary School and Sheila has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and Sheila has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism and she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Sheila De Jesus on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. And the next person that I'll call up is Mr. John Sullivan. Is John here? Okay. I will call up Paul Kelly. Whereas, Mr. Paul Kelly has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over two years and Paul has been a dedicated teacher since 2020 for the Sokolaski Elementary School and whereas, Paul has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and whereas, Paul has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism and he has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedicated to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their serious gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Paul Kelly on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of his retirement. Congratulations, Paul. Okay, the next retiree that I'd like to call up is Susan Ferrante. Susan has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over 32 years and Susan has been a dedicated substitute, paraprofessional, and then teacher at Chelsea High School, Williams, South, Early Learning Center, and Berkowitz Elementary School. And Susan has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and Susan has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism and she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Susan Ferrante on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this on this occasion of her retirement. Congratulations. Okay, and our next person to retire would be our custodian, John Sullivan. He's not here tonight, but I'll read a little bit about him. John has served in the Chelsea Public Schools for 23 years and eight months. He's served at Clark Avenue and the Mary C. Burke Complex from 1998 to 2021. So, congratulations to John Sullivan, even though he's not here. And then, our next retiree is Michael Keefe. He has worked in the Chelsea Public Schools for 25 years. At the Early Learning Center, the Clark Avenue School, and the Mary C. Burke Complex. He worked in Chelsea from 1996 to 2021. Congratulations, Michael. And then, our paraprofessionals that are also retiring is David Bolduc. He's been in, worked in Chelsea Public Schools for 14 years and nine months. He worked at the Wright School and Chelsea High School. He was a building substitute from 2007 to 2007. And then, a paraprofessional from 2007 to 2021. So, congratulations, David Bolduc. And then, our next, another paraprofessional that we'd like to congratulate is Patricia Fallon. She has worked for Chelsea Public Schools for 27 years and 10 months. She worked at the Williams School and the Early Learning Center from 1994 to 2021. Congratulations, Patricia. And then, another paraprofessional, Laurie Mercurio. She worked in Chelsea Public Schools for 13 years at the Berkowitz School. She was a building substitute, a long-term sub-paraprofessional, and a paraprofessional, and also worked as a substitute teacher. Congratulations, Laurie. And we have assistant to our cook, to cook and bakers, I Green Rather. She worked in Chelsea Public Schools for 24 years and eight months. She worked at the Williams School and the Mary Burke Complex from 1996 through 2021. So, congratulations, I Green. And then, we have one teacher, Valerie Smith, who worked in Chelsea Public Schools for 26 years and nine months. She worked at the Prattville School and the Early Learning Center. She worked as a paraprofessional from 1995 through 1999, and a teacher from 1999 through 2022. Congratulations, Valerie. That completes our 11 retirees this year. Congratulations to all of our retirees. We wish you a wonderful retirement, hope you get some rest, and you know what? We love to rehire our retirees. So, if you are looking to tutor, you get bored, if you need any, we will call you. So, just... So, we hope that you are available, if not, it's okay too. We would love to have you back, so, but enjoy and congratulations.
Wow, lots to celebrate. And once again, I echo Dr. Bata. Thank you to those who have committed so many years to our community and our students. We cannot thank you enough. Alrighty, team, let's get back to business. Next up on the agenda is public comment section. So, if you would like to say anything, you have four minutes, and you can come up to the podium. Alrighty, have a great night, everyone. It's okay, thank you so much. Bye again, thank you. Awesome, alrighty, moving right along, I will now turn it over to Dr. Bata to share out the reports of our schools.
So, we do have a short student achievement share with Mr. Michael Lovato, our assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. He does this on the side as he's interim principal at Chelsea High School as well. And I'm like, on July 1st, you're gonna, other duties as assigned will be eliminated from the contract.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bata, I have a feeling other duties assigned will always continue though, but, thank you. Dr. Bata, members of the school committee, we have two areas where we're gonna be reporting tonight. And that's gonna be the daily wide attendance and dropout rate and mobility rate. The first one will be on page two. Page two, if you go to the month of May, just as many of the previous months, we remain pretty consistent, from grade one starting to about 90%. And then, all the way to grades 12, we see some dips that are concerning in some areas for the high school. We see the seniors really dip down, but there was also many events, many different things that were taking place, and then to include seniors last week that occurred last week. And so, we had a lot of kids that were in and out, not making an excuse for it though, the attendance should still be 90% and above, but we could do, we do see the dips, which is not inconsistent for a high school the last couple of weeks of school. The next area for attendance, sorry, not for attendance, we'll go to page seven for the CPS dropout rate. And that's gonna be on page seven. On page seven, oops. Hold on. Sure. Tell me that again, I didn't hear the question.
So, under grade 12, under, in the attendance rate? The year-to-date is lower than any of the other ones, isn't that supposed to be an average?
Yeah, they end earlier. They end earlier, so like seniors, for example, their last day was last Friday. And so, I don't know, I guess I'm not understanding the question, to be honest with you, or what you're referring to.
So, the, the May, so under, under May, right? The year-to-date column, is that an aggregate of all the months in that whole year?
Yeah, that is correct, so there is a mistake. Thanks for pointing that out, yeah, the 32% should be much higher, as that should be year-to-date total. It would have decreased with the 47% for the month of May, but yes, the 32% isn't, is incorrect. So, I apologize for that, yes.
No worries, no worries, thank you so much.
Yeah, I believe these are the monthly, this is the monthly date, so we'll need to correct that.
Yeah, that, that's my mistake, so I, I will fix that. The mobility rate, give me one second, I'm not used to filtering through the pages anymore, I'm used to the internet.
Take your time, no worries.
Oh, there it is, thank you Veronica, saved me again. When you look at the mobility rate, our numbers out decreased significantly. And what we are seeing is that for the high school, we took in 11 kids, three out. Middle school, we took in nine kids, three out. Then elementary, 10 kids, three out, and then ELC pretty much stayed flat with four in, two out. Again, as a reminder, this also includes kids that are transitioning to the CVLA or COA as well. So, not all of it is about mobility out of the district. And so, Dr. Bata, school committee members, I stand for questions if Dr. Bata has any, if not, thank you.
Any questions? Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Lovato.
Thank you, Mr. Lovato, and yeah, it is a lot, you're getting, we're so used to doing everything on the computer now, so... Okay, our next update, we do not have a COVID update. So, the next would be our student representative update. And Cece, you're already done with school. Congratulations.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think I need this, but I don't have a lot of updates because I'm sure that they were shared last month, so as you know, since the minutes are really close to the months. But I do wanna say that, well, today will be my last meeting as a student rep, I don't wanna cry. But I just, more like a speech, I guess. So, I just wanted to like, thank each one of you that I know that I just met this year, which I wish I couldn't have met all of you earlier, but sadly, I just met you guys this year. A lot of you, I had a lot of conversations, and a lot of you I got to build relationships with and friendships, like Mr. Lovato and Dr. Jennings and Christine Lee. And I just wanted to say that I am, like, being the student rep was a challenge to me because, you know, you kinda get to be in charge of making sure all the students' voices are being heard. And you know, in the first months, I was like, really confused of how I had to do my job as the student rep with Valerie and everything, and you know, Mr. Lovato and Dr. Jennings stepped up to like, tell us what to do and like, kinda like, teach us how to improve our leadership skills and everything. We had meetings at school, they would come and, you know, talk to us. And I feel like I am ready to, you know, kinda take that step that is to go to college. And I know it's not, you know, in here in mass, but I believe that all these skills that I learned and gained being the student rep will help me in the future. And you know, you never know what I can become in the future, so I just, you know, I'm really thankful for each one of you. And I will, I have noticed, even though I transferred from another school in my sophomore year to Chelsea, and I was only there for a couple of months before COVID hit, I did see a big improvement over this year. A lot of things have changed, you know, with the new leaders that we have in school, a lot of things have changed. And I know that a lot of students have noticed that there is more positivity around school, and there is a door in the school that it's like, everyone's voices are being heard. And you know, as students are not shy anymore and stuff like that to go over, and you know, they always come look for Mr. Lovato, 'cause if you will see him in the high school, you will know that I'm always in the main office, I was always in the main office helping out. And you know, they were always looking for Mr. Lovato or Dr. Jennings because they had like, meetings with them about equity and all of that. So, I feel like this group that you have in here today, it's gonna be a big improvement for Chelsea. And I believe that good things are coming for Chelsea and for the students and the staff as well. So, I just wanna thank each one of you for your support, and I wish, well, I wish I will see you guys in the future as well, hopefully I will, 'cause I will come back and visit. But just know that I am really happy to be the student rep, and I guess this is my goodbye speech for being the student rep. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Cece. Any school committee members?
If it's green, it's work. Yes, okay, there it goes. So, I just wanna thank you for being so open. And I think, as Mr. Lovato did mention earlier, I think it's very few times you find an adult that is so vulnerable in stating that, or even openly stating that a minor or a child, someone that's younger than them, actually steps up and challenges their authority. And actually, that piece of information makes them a better person, or owns up to the fact that maybe in fact, they feel that the minor or the person actually taught them maybe more than what they could have taught. And that's why I always say that education is fluid, you know? We're always teaching each other, and you know, life happens, and we don't know where it's gonna take us, so yes, you'll probably come in here, and I have no doubt in my mind that you're gonna do great things. But when I first started, as you know, I started kind of randomly and later on in the game than everybody else. And you were instrumental to me personally, because I wanted to know what the students had to say and what was going on, and a lot of my major decisions came from the information, your perspective. Because I knew that deep down inside, you were giving us the nitty-gritty. You were there basically in the battlefield. So, even now, as you're just giving your honest perspective as what you're seeing from the educator's side, just knowing that your colleague, well, your colleagues really, because right now, as a senior no more, that was your job, going to school, being, well, thankfully, because of the staff members that we have, safe within your surroundings, that's what you, that's what the environment that we provide. So, even the feedback that you're giving us now, that's instrumental. Because it's letting us know that Dr. Bata's vision for where the Chelsea school system is going is in the right path, so we're doing the right things. I like knowing that the students feel comfortable going into the principal's office, and it doesn't always mean that they're in trouble, it means that they have an advocate, someone that they can hold accountable to, and someone that they can go ahead and reach out to for, like that other student earlier, hey, this is what we expect from you guys, and we're gonna hold you to it. So, thank you, and you're gonna do great.
And, and I do have to say something, because I've seen a lot of student reps in my career, and Cece, you've just won our hearts. We will always remember you, and I hope that you come back and come visit us and say hello. It's been a joy to, every time we, for those of you who don't know, we have cabinet meetings on Wednesday at the high school in the conference room. Because Mr. Lovato was over there, and we didn't want him to have to be out of the building. So, we went, and I think everyone at the high school knows that, oh, cabinet's here, it must be Wednesday. That's how they know, I've heard teachers say that, oh, must be Wednesday. And we always see Cece in the office, and I just say, let Cece train everybody, 'cause Cece knows what's going on. And Cece, we, we are so proud of you. You have an amazing future ahead of you, and the sky is the limit for you. You are humble, you are brilliant, and we just look forward to hearing about what is in store for you. And come back and tell us, and come, and make sure you let us know, because people need to hear your story, 'cause you're gonna do amazing things. And we love you.
Yes. Cece, I hope you feel the love, and continue to feel the love.
So, with that, I'll do the personnel update. So, this is our last month, and we are, I always go through the demographics. We've hired 50% Caucasian, 25% Hispanic, 25% Black, 0% Asian Pacific Islander. We've had some resignations and retirements, you can see here. Obviously, we had 11 retirements tonight, and we do not have any promotions or transfers or leaves of absences. That's the personnel report. The next report is our student enrollment report. And I'm really proud of this, because we are now at 6,209 students. So, we are right back at where we were pre-pandemic when we left. So, we are at 6,209. So we are at 6,209. So we have completely recovered and just excited for what we have for the following years as well. So I would like to commend these two reports for the record.
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Beta. Do I have a motion to, oh, I'm forgetting the phrase. Come in. There you go, thank you. Commendo following two reports to, thank you, Roberto, I mean, Mr. Jimenez. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Velez. Alrighty, team, let's head to new business. Consideration and action to accept a grant of $35,000 from the HESIA Fund for school year 2022-2023 to support a collaboration between Chelsea Public Schools and the Boston Children's Chorus. Explanation: The HESIA Fund is a women's grant-making organization operating in the greater Boston area that has granted funding for a collaboration between CPS and the Boston Children's Chorus to provide after-school music programs for estimated 75 students next school year. The funds will be for contract services, stipends, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept a grant of $35,000 from the HESIA Fund for school year 2022-2023 to support a collaboration between Chelsea Public Schools and the Boston Children's Chorus. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, the motion passes. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept a grant of $5,000 from the Boston University Consortium Council for school year 2022-2023 to enhance independent play skills among students with special needs at the Early Learning Center. Explanation: The Boston University Consortium is a collaboration between Boston-area educators and the BU We lack College of Education and Human Development that is providing a grant to Early Learning Center to enhance independent play skills among students with special needs. The funds will be used to purchase play materials for students, professional development materials for teachers, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 71, 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept a grant for $5,000 from the Boston University Consortium Council for school year 2022-2023 to enhance independent play skills among students with special needs at the Early Learning Center. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept a total of $20,000 in private grant funds for the Chelsea Educational Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program and REACH for school year 21-2022. Explanation: Funds have been awarded by the Anna B. Sterns Charitable Foundation to support the Intergenerational Literacy Program. These funds will be used for stipends, student assistance, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. In addition, funds have been donated by Eastern Salt Company to support the REACH program. These funds will be used for the school, sorry, for school youth events and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept a total of $20,000 in private grant funds from the Chelsea Educational Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program and the REACH for school year 2021 to 2022. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to establish the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2022-2023 for specified salaried and hourly positions. Explanation: Each year, the school committee reviews and approves the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly, hourly positions and salaried positions. For 20, for fiscal year 2023, multiple changes are proposed to the pay schedule for hourly positions, including providing ranges for instructor hourly rates, increasing daily substitute rates, and increasing other hourly rates to acknowledge impending changes to the Massachusetts minimum wage. In addition, a new position of combined crossing guard slash lunch monitor is being created. For salaried wages, some changes to the wage ranges are proposed. If approved, these changes will be in effect as of July 1st. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to establish the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2022 to 2023 for specified salaried and hourly positions. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to approve a revised budget transfer in the amount of up to $1,015,000 to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, instruction and assessment, and Clark Avenue Middle School to facilities and transportation, special education and pupil personnel, and district administration. Explanation: The purpose of this action is to amend the cross-departmental budget transfer approved by the school committee on May 2nd, 2022. The total amount to be transferred remains unchanged, but greater specificity is provided since additional payrolls and expenditures have occurred since the previous action approved by the school committee. Funds are being transferred to district administration for continued work on enhancements to the financial system that will streamline payroll, personnel, and financial processes. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to approve a revised budget transfer in the amount of up to $1,015,000 to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, instruction and assessment, and Clark Ave. Middle School to facilities and transportation, special education, and pupil personnel, and district administration. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Lastly, we have consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to Kenneby Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire for up to 68 Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy students and nine chaperones on June 23rd. Explanation: After its first successful school year as a new school, CVLA students are invited to an end-of-year celebration. Out-of-state field trips must be approved by the school committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to Kenneby Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire for up to 68 Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy students and nine chaperones on June 23rd. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez? It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Enjoy the field trip to the students at the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy. Alrighty, team, I have a few announcements, and then I can open it up to the team for closing remarks. We have the Chelsea High School, Chelsea Opportunity Academy, and the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy graduation on June 11th at 10:00 a.m. I hope to see you all there. And then the last day of school is June 24th. Any last comments? Mr. Jimenez?
Another quick announcement, Chelsea Pride is happening tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. in front of the police station.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Anyone over here? Awesome, team. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn our last school committee meeting of the year? So much excitement, right? Awesome, meeting adjourned at 9:20.
I was waiting for Sean.